Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 27th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the Select Board present minus Mark Pendergast, we have the town manager, town clerk, and members of the public and presentations to come. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from December 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
No second map.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, minutes are approved. We have our first public comment. The members of the public wish to make a comment. I will close the first public comment. We have a public hearing for the adult-use marijuana storefront license renewal of Silver Therapeutics. Is anybody here for that? Hello?
Hello.
Hi, I'm Josh Silver. I'm the founder of Silver Therapeutics, and we are here seeking renewal of our license from the town of Burwick to continue to operate. We've been open since, what, April, March of this year, and it's been going great. I mean, it's really, we've had no complaints from many of our neighbors. Our customers seem very happy, and, you know, we have other stores in Maine. We've got one in South Portland and Portland that are continuous sources of misery for me. But this Burwick location has been trained, so we're just grateful that we're here and looking forward to another great year.
Terrific. James, has there been any complaints from the public, from the police, any issues?
Got no active violations. I did have some comments from some of the neighbors from turnarounds. I think they put in some signage of their own. Did you get any feedback from those neighbors?
No, I haven't. That's actually the first I've heard of it. Adam, have you heard?
It's feedback I received several months ago. Sounds like they've put in their own signage of, like I said, that. I have not heard from them since, but I just wanted to put that up there. But other than that, no complaints from the operations. There's no active violations at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Silver?
I haven't heard any complaints. I've asked a few people in the neighborhood, and they said most of the time they can't even tell us that, so. Nice, quiet neighbors.
Thank you.
Terrific. We'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we renew the storefront license for Silver Therapeutics at 60 Route 236.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? You're all set for another year.
Thank you. Next December.
Happy holidays to you, too.
All right. We have no reports from committees. We have no department reports. Appointment, presentation to other guests. We have Main Water Company. Please, step up.
Maybe we should have James just give a little background about why they're here.
Yes, please.
Town Water Department, we've been faced with some challenges with operations and staffing. Finding a Level Four operator has been challenging, and we've had ads out for the better part of six months to a year. So the town is considering contract with Main Water, to take responsibility for operations. This includes day-to-day reading meters, customer service billing. We do understand that this is a substantial change. So tonight, the purpose of tonight is for an initial Q and A with the board, maybe a quick presentation. And we intend on holding a more formal presentation three weeks from now. I think we'll probably get more into the process and procedure as we want to get the word out as far as for this change. I have heard back from three of Main Water's references, Waldaborough, Freiburg, and Vinylhaven. They all spoke very, very highly of Main Water, and they all had similar feedback that they have a depth of knowledge, depth of staffing, resources, connections for whether it's equipment or funding sources. And they all provided a very strong recommendation to making the change. So.
Terrific.
Great. Thank you very much, James, and thanks to the board especially for having us. I'll share my screen. We do have a short slide deck available. And like I mentioned before, we're a utility company. We're not in sales. So if this makes sense for the town, we're happy and excited to serve, but happy to be here for the discussion anyway. So I'm going to turn on the PowerPoint and hope that it fires up correctly. There we go.
There we go. So, thank you for inviting us. My name's Mark Vanoy. I'm president of Main Water. And Mike Cummins is with us as well. Mike is in charge of all our operations across the state. Main Water is a company. We're a water utility. We own and operate 12 public water systems in 21 different communities across the state. We serve roughly, through those connections, a population of about 80,000 people. Our largest system is the Bedford-Saco system. Serves Bedford, Saco, Old Orchard Point, Old Orchard Beach, and parts of Pine Point. When you look across Main Water, we have 80 drinking water professionals serving these different communities. What I get excited about with Main Water is these guys and women are just passionate about what they do. They love what they do. They make quality water. They love the customer service aspect of it. And they deliver in the communities that we serve. We do a survey every year of our customers, and that's something that's really important to us, is the customer service side. And we look at world-class levels of customer service at anything over 85%. And we typically get results in the 90s in the communities that we serve. You know, these are local people who care about the community and deliver each day. Here's a map of our operations areas, and this includes, on this map, in blue are the systems that we own, and in green are the contract-operated systems. So you see a mix there, and then we've called it out on the right-hand side as far as the ones where we actually have contracts. So we do a fair amount of sewer billing for towns where we own the water system, but we build a sewer site for them. So we have contracts for that. We do a combination of billing, customer service, accounting, and operations in a number of different communities listed at the bottom there. So you have Vinylhaven, Freiburg, Tennants Harbor, the town of Waldaborough, which is a town-owned system there, and then the Port Clyde Water District.
Turn to Mike on the specifics of Burwick's situation.
Yeah, so I think what, you know, an agreement and a contract that we've shared with James that we could offer for the town would be essentially all of the components that go into running a water system. So to start, it looks like it would be a two-year agreement is what we're proposing, certainly up for discussion. But the items that it covers is, one, customer service. And what that means is when a customer has a question about their account, about the water system, about water quality, that our customer service team that sits in Saco picks up the phone and then uses our systems to deploy our team based on whatever the situation is. We also have the billing services, which is, it's our revenue services team. So they make sure that all of the meter reads that we would read get back into our system, that the bills go out appropriately to the customer based on the water rates that Burwick has in place. And then we make sure and confirm that we've collected revenue on those bills, and that if we don't, that we go out to the customer through the PUC phone calls and shut off the procedures to make sure that we collect the revenue for the town. All of the administrative services that go into a water department or a water district, or for us, a water company, and that's just, that's the full staff in hand that sits in Saco. So that's our executive team, our engineering team, our water quality manager, customer service, you know, all of those things that happen in the back office. One of the items that for a full contract that we typically offer, and on a normal year we would offer right away in this contract, but we can't right now, is the financial services. So the monthly accounting, the year-end accounting, as well as the finance expertise that's normally needed to do a rate file. So that is usually in our contract. We're in a unique time where our controller is retiring, and we have a new controller onboard who's hiring another staff accountant, and we just, we would never say that we could do something if we didn't feel comfortable that we could do it. So we would need some time, but we could work that into the agreement in the future. And then we have what we call the routine and non-routine services. That I'll talk through a little bit. The non-routine services are all the things outside of a basic day-to-day water operation. If you have a capital investment that you need onsite expertise and project management and eyes on, whether it's a water main replacement project or a treatment project, or those emergencies that really rise above and beyond, a significant main break that requires more hours and resources, or a water quality issue that's ongoing and would require, you know, and we could certainly talk about that when they occur too and look back to the agreement. But then we have the routine, the routine operations, and this is laid out in the agreement. And this is really, this is meant to be an umbrella. We certainly do some things in our other contracts that maybe aren't listed in here, but with a straight face, we can say that's a day-to-day operation. So the flushing of the system that happens twice a year, making sure that the gate valves work and that they're maintained, making sure the fire hydrants work, that they're pumped out for the winter time, basic leak detection that we do in all of our systems to make sure that the system is as tight as it can be and that we're not losing water and money when the department doesn't need to be. All of the basic water quality sampling, reporting, testing to be in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act and all the rules of the main drinking water program. All things pumping and treatment facility, those day-to-day operation components and tasks, that's all in the agreement. And like I said, all other activities that are required to keep Burwick Water Department Treatment and Distribution System in good shape. We, when we take on a contract, we treat it as though it is our system. And we take it that seriously, that compliance is important, timeliness is important, and things need to work. And as we look at the capital investment side, the things that the town would want to think about investing in, we also see that as our obligation to inform James or the Select Board or Jody to what we see in the system and what the town might want to consider investing in for the well-being of the water system. So that's the end of our short presentation. That's what we do, and we'd be very excited to do it for Burwick. We've proposed a two-year agreement based on the staffing and overhead that we would need to do it, plus our markup. It's 22,000 a month, and so that puts us at $264,000 a year. But when, as James and I have discussed before, when looking at the labor and overhead that the water department currently has in their finances, we're actually below what the water department has for labor and overhead right now. So I think it makes sense if the town's ready to do it, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
So we've had an issue with drought the last couple of years, having chemicals in the water. We've had to boil water, issue water. So are you aware of that?
Yes.
And what is your plan moving forward going into the summer of 2023?
Yeah, so we are aware of the challenges. We are aware of the limitations of the existing facility, especially when the river's low. And we are aware that the town is working with Wright Pierce and with their current funding opportunity to fix the issue. The way the facility runs right now, all we can do is operate it to its full potential. But we do know Wright Pierce very well. We do know Dan Flag, the project engineer, very well, and we've actually connected with him to get an idea of what that project looks like. So we'd be able to run the current facility. My understanding is that there was some public notification that went on this past summer. And if that's the current case with the existing facility before the improvements, we'd be prepared to do those notifications to optimize the current facility, but then see the project.
Okay, all right. So the financial piece that you're saying that you cannot do, that's going to fall to who?
I think it's, in some cases, that's Lisa. I've talked with Lisa, and she's comfortable with maintaining the financial aspects of it. In terms of rate cases, we've used contractors before. We've received some funding to do it. Don't anticipate us needing to do a rate case within a year because the rates are going up July 1, 2023. We built on a two-year step. In terms of the other parts of it, I've talked with Lisa about. She's okay with keeping that part of it.
Okay, all right. And my understanding is, so the billing is going to go out January 1st, and we'll pay their bill in that month. What happens? Are you going to honor any payment plan agreements? I know we have several elderly people that are on our system, and sometimes it can be difficult when they set up payment plans to ensure that they get it paid throughout the quarter before the next billing comes.
Yeah, no, so Main Water will honor the town of Burwick's terms and conditions filed with the PUC and also honor the current tariffs of the water department. So we'll do the administrative work, but under the town's, you know, regulated guidelines of that bill.
And that would include payment arrangements that are already on the books.
Okay, so anyone that already has one set up, you would continue those? There wouldn't be like an immediate notice or anything?
Right.
Okay. And when it comes to the financial piece, is it, I know currently, right now, they don't, we don't have it. So I was wondering if it's an additional piece that you offer. Can people pay online? Can people, is it electronic, or is it going to be a mail-out like we currently have? You're a larger company, so I'm just wondering if it has other resources.
So the billing piece will be incorporated in our agreement. So the customers currently have different options. They can pay by check, or they can go and pay online, or they can set up an auto-pay. So the Burwick customers will have all of those same options, and the portal will be through our web, will be accessed through our website.
Okay, so there will be a portal for people to go on?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so just to, so it's the accounting piece that the town will continue to do. We'll do the billing and collections. The money will flow to the town. The town will do the accounting.
Okay. And I'm just asking, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but just asking this. You're talking about a changeover from January 1st to then the billing coming out for April 1st. So is the responsibility the town's, or are you going to notify all current residents or current customers about the change? Because right now, if I write out my check for the town of Burwick Water, I'm sending it to the town of Burwick. I'm assuming it's now going to go to you. What kind of notification are you going to give to current customers?
So obviously, the town, you know, this will, this is public information, this conversation. When the, if the decision is made to go forward, we would own the notification piece to customers. This is where you pay your bill. This is who is operating the water system.
And you would do that?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
Yep. I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Now, in terms of the water rates and everything, we would still control that, set that price. You would essentially bill the town, and we would reimburse it. You would be paying us all of our, all the water rates back to us.
Yeah, the revenues will run to the town, and then you would pay us as a contractor to run the system. And, yeah, the tariff will remain the way it is as it's regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. And then at that point, you know, you've got a step rate right now in some distant year when you decide to go back to the Public Utilities Commission for a change in tariff. You do that.
Any other questions?
Just one piece of information that I should add, and I talked to James about this as well, is that there are some upfront conversion costs, one to NDS, which is our customer service system, and then to OSG, which is another component to our billing. So the total of that, that would be an $11,000 conversion in total. We did confirm with those vendors this past week that they felt comfortable that they'd be able to meet our deadline, allowing us to read meters per our deadline and be able to get the bills out. So they've said that they'd be able to do that, so I want to share that.
So you're proposing a two-year contract. You're familiar with our plans for the plant and working with Wright Pierce. And that two years brings us into about the time where we're supposed to get the new upgraded plants up and running. At that time, is it your intention to look to extend the contract?
Typically, with all of our contract operations, we renew them at the end. We haven't had any in the last decade-plus where we've ended the contract. But that's totally up to the town, and we see that as our responsibility to deliver.
What's the length of contracts you usually want?
A one to two years.
One to two years for every town? Every two years you come back and ask again?
At the end of the two years, typically, when you have the situation with other towns, what kind of increase in rate do you look at, like for the towns to pay?
It's typically whatever the cost of living, you know. So it's usually inflationary is what we're looking at. So what our labor rates have done, you know, we need to make payroll, and then what any of the, you know, the typical O and M expense increases that we've seen that roll into the contract.
And just, I know you sent an email. I just wanted to process it. So we do currently have one town employee, so that employee's going to remain on. No one's going to lose their job by switching this over.
It would be, that would not be the plan.
It would not? Okay, all right.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Conundrums, riddles?
I just want to say, you know, after, you know, been sitting behind the desk here for almost nine years this time around, and it seems like every year we're just, you know, again and again returning to the water department and one problem right after another. And so it sounds to me like this is a good opportunity, you know, to get an outside look at it. You know, it's been run by the town for all these years, and, you know, things tend to get stagnant after a while. This is a good chance for us to, you know, have somebody from the outside come in and look at everything and really, you know, give us fresh ideas on what we can and can't do. So I think it's a good thing.
I also feel like it's a positive step forward. It's definitely something worth trying because we certainly had our troubles with that department as long as I can remember for various different reasons. It's never the same reason twice, but it seems like there's a good opportunity here to start something, you know, just get some new hands in there instead of the old ones that haven't been able to deal with the problems before. But yeah, there's definitely some things to iron out. The, one of the concerns that I have is to make sure that we have customer data that stays with us in case there's an issue on your end with your contractors, or we decide not to continue the contract. We still have all that data that we can switch over to, and we're not just starting from scratch. Absolutely, yeah. I also feel like a great addition, if we go this route, is that we need to put a computer out in the town hall where people can go and just like, it just says "pay your water bill" over here, and it just, they can handle it over there for people that don't have access to the internet and are used to going into the town hall and just paying on a regular basis, you know. That way, at least they can get, you know, at least for the first billing cycle or two, they're able to figure it out. You know, we don't leave them hanging. Just they come into the water, they come into the town hall to pay, and then it's like, I don't, I haven't used a computer, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
We have those, we have those people. We have citizens that they're not computer-literate,
or they don't have a computer, or they don't have the internet. And this is going to be a big change for them, so we need to make sure that it's accessible to pay their bill the way they are used to, at least in spirit. But yeah, I'm sure there's going to be growing pains if we go this way, you know, customer service and getting meters read and everything accurate. But from what I've heard, as James said, from other towns, you have a decent reputation with those towns, and certainly nobody that we contacted spoke out and said that it was a sham and a bad idea. So that's always good, you know?
I sure hope not. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. And, you know, I think as we set up this agreement, the important thing to remember is that it's Burwick's water system, so communication is the best thing that we can do. So however the Select Board or the town manager or the Public Works Director wants to be updated on what's going in the water system, let's, you know, if we go this route, let's set that up in the beginning so we can get that communication going. I think that's really been a success for other contracts, is informing, you know, those who own the water system, what's going on.
Because I can take it in the form of just communicating with Jody and I, or I can take it in the form of like a citizens advisory board or committee. I don't know how formalized it gets.
We've done both.
Yeah, we have both. Depends on the community.
I think direct communication with the Public Works and the town manager on a regular basis, you know, is the best way to, you know, keep the town informed, and then occasionally appearing here.
You know, biannually or annually, just coming in and doing a quick update so that we have it on the record, how things are going, especially in the first two years.
Absolutely, yeah.
And just, you know, a public record of this is where things are going, you know. Again, I think that this is a move in the right direction. We've had multiple issues. This is, I think you have the resources and the ability to, you know, to handle it. My only concern is communication, because we do, as Noah said, we have a lot of elderly, and this is going to be brand-new. This is not just changing the electrician or that. This is a major utility. And I get that, but they're not all going to be looking at the agenda or this and that. And so we need to make the extra effort excessively in the first and second billing cycle to just say, hey, this is who we are. This is what's going to happen. This is how you pay your bill. And they're not going to get it on the first time. It may take the second and the third time until they get used to it, especially some of our older citizens who are like, I just stop at the town hall and pay. You know, I just do this, and now I got to go online. And so, I mean, you're also asking, you know, Patty, they're going to come to the town hall, and if they don't, if they're not computer-literate, where are they going to go? They're going to go to the desk and say, can someone help me? So, you know, you should be aware of that, and I think we should put that effort out there just during, you know, the transition period. That's, again, I just think it's communication.
And they can also, you have physical offices as well where people can go and pay if they need to.
Well, and they can drop, you know, the bill will come like a regular bill that you can write a check and put it in the mail.
That's why, yeah, I like the fact that you can either do it online, because some people, it's just easier to do it online, automatic.
Or if they want to come to the town office and drop a, you know.
Yeah, we'll get it to you. No problem.
We can work through this.
We can, we can send a Dropbox.
I just think some people, some of our old folks might get a little confused in the first-
Sure, yeah.
-cycle or two. That's all.
Any other comments, questions?
Just the one thing to add to, I, I think just as a reminder to the water users, if, if we do move forward with main water, that the rates don't change, you know, the projected rate change, nothing's going to change because of, of us moving forward. It's, you know, because I think that's the first question that any water user is going to use is what's going to happen to my bill, you know? And I think that's just a good reminder to the public that those that are on the line, you know, anything that's there is already what's been voted on, approved and going forward. There's no impact on anything that was, whether we were to move forward or not.
If anything, it's going to save the town a little bit of money.
Correct.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on the tax rate changing, but I mean, it's still, you know, money that we're not going to be spending.
Especially when we've had issues, they have more resources to handle it, but you make a good point. The rates are going to change July 1, 2023, which is going to be only a few months after you take over. Some people are going to connect that. And so we should be very clear in anything we put out like BDM or you guys put out that this was already approved prior to any kind of decision.
Whether we go forward with that, this or not-
Right.
Those rates are going to change.
Right, exactly.
That, this has no effect on those.
Right.
Terrific. I really appreciate the presentation and all the information. We will probably gather some more questions for ourselves. And in two weeks, three weeks, I can't remember, I think it's two weeks, but, uh, next meeting, we will have a public hearing. The public, he, public can come out, express any concerns or, or congratulations, you know? And we'll have some more questions and we'll try to get it all hammered out and find out if we're going to approve it or not. So.
I do have one more question. You, I know you just, it was only a couple of slides, but there was some great information. Can you send those or?
Yeah, well, I can send them as well.
Alright, thank you.
James, I'll, I'll send them to you.
Yeah, just because if, you know, people ask us, I can, you know, we have something to point to. That's all.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Look forward to the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll send the electronic out as well.
We will see you in a couple of weeks then.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you guys, we appreciate it.
Yeah, no, it was the first thing I had and then you kind of, I think just a reminder to the public too, if anybody is not going to be at that meeting and wants to have questions answered, please send it to any one of us prior to so that we can get that question answered.
Anybody sitting up here or the town clerk, send us questions, concerns. We will look over them before the meeting. We'll get them addressed in that meeting.
Good.
Alright, we have no unfinished business. We have town manager's report.
So speaking of water, I'll throw something out there. Just to get a pulse on what you're thinking, there's been considerations of taking fluoride out of the public water system, which would be our call to make. And it would drop our water plant from a level four to level three. Is this something we want to try to take on and do a straw poll if the community would be interested in it or?
No.
Should we kind of just hold off and?
I don't think that that's worthwhile. I mean, it, I mean, maybe it's a discussion to have if we decide not to go with main water, you know, and we really can't find a level four operator. But, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to it in the long term, so I, I don't think we should do that.
And it would be a major change that they would associate with, oh, look, you're going to send to me more. Now we're not going to have this.
Yeah, just, it's something that, I know I've heard we were kicking around for the past few years, so, so I figured at least throw it out there. Okay, thank you for the feedback on that one. Next thing I have, just an update on the edge. Phase one is complete. Phase two is going very strong. Eight Main Street foundations in. Three businesses are ready to move into 12 Sullivan Street. Later this winter into the spring. Eight Main Streets, a mixed-use building slated for completion in the summer of 2023. My main focus for bringing this forward is I just want to make sure that we're, we can do what we can to keep the momentum going across the street. Great Falls has been investing pretty heavily into the site. They invested, which was essentially public infrastructure, they inherited to upgrade the, um, Culver, they're going to upgrade off Wilson Street into sixty-inch pipe going through their site. They will be paying several hundred thousands of dollars to sewer fees. They'll be paying a couple hundred thousand dollars in residential impact fees. And they're also going to be responsible for several hundred thousand dollars of traffic mitigation, which, fair enough, that's what they signed up for. Tonight, I'm just asking for a direction or see if it would be a good idea to work on an MOU solely for the infrastructure impact fees to say that the infrastructure impact fees we collect from the site, we're going to invest back in to the edge site, which that would take form in sidewalks around their site or getting utilities underground or some of the infrastructure improvements that are required or intersection improvements as well. So that, um, the other part of the MOU is there are, with the earmark funding the town received for three point one million dollars, DOT in their traffic movement permit is requiring them to do some upgrades. We were planning on doing those upgrades anyways. So we put that in the MOU of, of parsing out what the town will be responsible for and that the impact, those infrastructure impact fees will be reinvested back right into that core downtown area. And I just, throughout this will have no impact and rec impact fees is just infrastructure impact fees.
It'd always been my understanding that that's what we're going to use the impact fees for anyways.
Yeah, we don't have MOUs with anybody else that takes and puts a business.
Yeah, we, we, you know, when we talked about this, about, you know, putting the impact fees in, you know, we had the discussion of the money we want to come in is to put in the sidewalks on the opposite sides of where they're building, to do those improvements anyways, you know? So is, it, I don't, I don't have a problem with a memorandum of, of understanding about it, but, you know, just like I said, is, I thought our intention was to put it all back in there anyways, you know? And the impact fees we collect have to be used within the downtown district anyways, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
So it has to be in the-
So it's already there.
That's already, yeah, I, I thought that was just something to help build that up anyways, especially as we add that extra street in the middle.
And just as a point of clarity, is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, is it, is it binding? I mean, if we make one, is it, is it just like, this is our intention, but, you know, like, or is it like?
It's a good, I think that, I think for me, the way that I would understand it, it's just something in writing that-
This is our intention, you know, this is our goal.
Right, but I mean, are we setting a precedent for any, for any other person? I mean, this is obviously a large project, I get that, but there are other businesses that are going to come in, that are going to fill in over time. And so we already have a directive with the impact fees for them to be utilized in the downtown area. So now you're, are you looking just to codify that? Are you going to do that with anybody else that comes in and pays, um, impact fees? Are you going to do an MOU with this, those businesses as well? I mean, we just sold that-
Yeah, cause that's, I mean, I, I think to piggyback Linda, I think that would be something you would just throw back to the planning and then a stipulation of, of a site, you know, instead of going to an MOU route, just saying this is what, you know, that, that site's going to look like and this is what that responsibility is.
And-
And it is our responsibility to make sure the sidewalk, we want those there.
Well, I'm just remembering like, we had this, we had a conversation a while back about like, eh, the impact fees of like, an apartment building. Where like, then we have to upgrade the sidewalks out in front of it and stuff like that. That's why the impact fees are greater for those kind of buildings and things like that. So I mean, it's kind of hand in hand where like, yeah, they're, they're building these, you know, this, this entire, you know, complex, for lack of a better term. They, and yeah, we're going to have to upgrade the stuff around it. We're not going to leave it like a wooded area, you know? It's like, we have, we were going to upgrade it and it's always been the goal to upgrade the sidewalks, dig one hole, you know, all the utilities underground and all that stuff. So I mean, like, it's all heavily connected and it's all part of the same overall goal.
Yeah, when they go to the planning board, those are put it right in there. I mean, it's the impact fees are for.
If they're afraid that we're just gonna, they're going to build this thing and we're just going to be like, nah, we got the thing and now we're not going to worry about the sidewalks and the roads or the utilities or anything. And it's like, I mean,
That wouldn't be a good idea.
That would be, that would be a very poor choice on our part, since the whole goal was to revitalize the area, you know?
You just want to be careful that they're not restricting.
Yeah.
If they say, well, you, you, we want the sidewalks to only go to here and as a town, we decide we want them to go another hundred feet. If you have an MOU, you're locked in.
And that's, that's my only, my, my concern is just that we're going to put it on a, put, put it somehow into writing and then like, you know, block ourselves into what we, now we can only spend this money in this area on that, instead of having a more robust choice.
Right.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves to something that, you know, where we were going to do anyway, but now we've limited ourselves somehow.
Yeah, and I think-
Yeah, I would think, I would think honestly-
I'd be interested in seeing one written out, you know, just to see what the proposals are, but is, but like I said, is, is no, wouldn't, no, is, you know, I, I was the one that pushed for the impact fees from the start. That was because is we wanted to invest the money in the downtown.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I hear, I think they're all good points. Just, I think when the general ledger comes down on what Great Falls has invested in the community and what we've invested in, just making sure that it's, it's fair because they are upgrading a lot of our-
But are, doesn't our impact fee policy pretty much illustrate that it has to be used in the downtown area? Which is basically circling the whole area.
Yeah, basically. And, and also they are getting a TIF as well.
Right.
So, you know, that it's, it's not, they, they are getting the benefits of the, of the, of the, of the situation as well. I'm not saying we're not going to get it, we're going to get it too, but, you know, they're, they're, they are going to get all the benefits that we can give, you know?
Yeah.
Because we want to, we want to have a vibrant downtown. We want to have places for people to live and work and, and to trout, walk. We want people to be able to walk around the downtown without-
Right, and I, I like, just really what Noah says, you don't want to be pigeonholed because if you do it once, now anybody else that builds it up, they're going to want the same thing. Well, you can build a sidewalk, but only in front of my business. You know, and then you just, you're going down that MOU route. When the impact fees, the policy itself is pretty clear, it needs to be utilized downtown.
If they want to write one one up, we'll take a look at it, but, I mean, I don't feel strongly enough, I don't feel very strongly about pushing for it, so.
Okay. Makes sense to me. I think they'll appreciate hearing that. It's kind of a sinewy, that's the direction we're heading in anyways. Last piece I have, uh, there's been a lot of correspondence going back and forth about the, the gun range off of One North Road. We received a letter from the North Borough Select Board expressing their concern on behalf of the board and concerned citizens. I've been in contact with the neighborhood since July. And I have reached out to the gun range. Uh, the gun range has restricted some of their hours. They, and they are working on minor improvements and they've shown a willingness to work with the neighborhood. Depending on the neighbor, I think there's a range of tolerance for the gun range. There are neighbors that are really looking to find a collaborative approach. There's, there's others that are pretty fed up and have been dealing with it for many years. Irish has been, uh, working with the gun range and investigating and going through the code process. She has reached out to a safety inspector and seeing if she can arrange an inspection to ensure that the gun range is up to the safety standards. There have been reports of a barn that was hit and a garage that was hit. And if you look on a map, you can see that the gun, gun range is straight on with Randall Road. But the issue is until someone has, from my perspective, from a code perspective, who's going to say that that bullet came from the gun range without a doubt? How, how do we, how do we prove that? Even with that said, I think there's enough interest and the gun range has shown a willingness to work with the neighborhood. The select board, the, uh, North Borough Select Board at the end of the letter said, uh, should the board wish to meet, they would welcome the opportunity. So I don't know if that's the, the call to action where we get everybody together and discuss it as a group and, and see where that goes. In terms of, you know, the things that I, we've seen in reports, I've been talking with Dwayne, town manager of North Berwick. It's been confirmed, there's been a bullet found in the horse barn and the garage. But, um, there's no report of bullets whizzing by people. I don't know if that's a new one to me. I don't see any police report that's backed that up. So that's kind of the quick synopsis of it. Are there any outstanding questions or anything that you want me to follow up on?
Beyond the general complaints, um, which, I, like, yeah, we have, we have the letter from, we have a letter from the town of North Berwick. We have the letter from the, uh, concerned citizens. We have a letter from Irish and basically they all refer to the same three incidents over the past, I think, sixteen years. I think one was, one was labeled from two thousand and six or something like that, you know? Beyond though, beyond this, I mean, is the gun range in compliance with the town ordinance?
In, in terms of the state, state law, and that's kind of what we defer to from our understanding and we've checked with legal a couple of different times. They are in compliance. Their, the state statute's very specific about noise. And it says, we cannot use our noise ordinance for gun range that's been permitted in, in existence. We can't put anything retroactively on them in terms of, um, there's a provision in there about use and activity. And that's specifically referring to, from the feedback that we've got, about the actual structure of the gun range, if they're out of the lane. There have been cases about increased activity, which we believe objectively, there's probably more mem, there's more members that can be objectively proven that from our research is not enough to prove increased level of-
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, the, the state statute is a change in use or expansion of activity. Nothing in this section limits the ability of municipality to regulate the location and construction of a new sport shooting range or substantial change in use. So substantial change in use initially went to, you know, entry, increased activity. That is not, again, in our research. The other part is safety, which obviously if we could prove that the bullets came from the gun range and they're making it on the way to Randall Road, then that has some serious, would have some serious legs to it. Just not sure how we prove and, and who would say that the bullet came from that gun range?
So from our perspective, beyond a voluntary reduction in hours or, you know, amount of activity, there's nothing substantial that we can do as the town.
I think the best, the best option may be getting, maybe getting together with North Berwick, inviting the gun range and just say, pull the workshop and see what they're willing to commit to, but in terms of forced action or violations, it'd be, if, at this point, I, I'm not sure, if there was a violation, um, and we're going to continue investigating and looking into it, if there's something we believe there's enough to warrant a violation, we'll go down that route, but at this point, I have not seen anything that warrants that type of action.
Well, I would have no problem with meeting with the, the, uh, the gun range members or-
Or a workshop, public workshop.
If they want, if they want to come to a meeting, if they want to do a public workshop, if we want to do a public workshop with North Berwick, I mean, which, whichever route is, is best. But I, I, you know, But I, you know.
I mean, even then, it's voluntary on, on, on the club because it's not even something they have to address.
At best, we can just say, you know, we would prefer it if you could limit the amount of activity or put up better screening or something to make sure that no bullets are leaving the property. But again, it's, and generally, if, but the amount that the, the people are saying that they fire, the idea that three bullets went astray in 16 years is pretty, is a pretty small sample size of the situation. I could fire more bullets in five minutes in my backyard, you know, it's like, and so.
Yeah, but the club, the club seems to be very receptive to trying to work with the neighbors.
Too, so.
Yeah, so I think they'd be open to a workshop just because they've been trying to find the resolution.
Even handgun only, though. I mean, like, how, how, how long, how large is the range in terms of property?
It's not huge, you know, but, you know, the way it's set up is, you know, the, the, the range itself, the, is only, you know, 100 yards or so from their actual range. But, you know, they have the, I haven't been there for many, many years, but, you know, they have the, the clubhouse or whatever there and things, but.
I mean, a nine millimeter bullet can't go, can't go very far beyond that. So, I mean, maybe somebody out there with, you know, 50 caliber handgun or something, I'm not sure. It's, yeah, if, 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 if they're willing to come to a meeting and talk to us about it, I think that'd be, you know, pretty much our best option to do anything.
Maybe we just invite North Berwick and invite the neighbors too?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing, if, if they want to do a public workshop and have us mediate it, you know, just our facilitator.
Do it in, do it here so that we can put it out over the air and.
Okay.
There's no decisions. It's a public workshop, so there's no decisions, but at least maybe bring them all to the table. And again, the club, it's voluntary whether they come or not, but from what we've seen.
Trying to work with the neighbors.
They're putting the effort here to try to work.
The fact that they did anything is, you know, they could very easily, just were like, no, go practice, you know, it's done.
The Sanford-Springville Gun, Gun Club, you know, they've been in existence for decades and decades. And, you know, they had the place up on Route Four just out of Sanford for a long time.
Yeah.
Not by the airport, right?
Um, no.
It was up by the Book of Law man.
Yeah, the area, so, yeah, they've been in existence for decades. Like I said, is they seem to be willing to work with people, so, you know, invite them all down. All they can do is say no.
Yeah. And we're no worse off now than we're ever. All right. Anything else? Or is that all?
That's, that's all.
All right. Site Board Communications, we have the aforementioned letter from the town of North Berwick and the letter from the concerned citizens about the, about the gun range. We have the approval of the accounts payable payroll warrants. We have a payroll warrant number 40 from December 22nd, 2022 in the amount of $78,776.38. We have the accounts payable warrant number 41 from December 27th, 2022 in the amount of $303,498.91. I move that we pay our bills.
Second to motion.
No further discussion. All those in favor? Bills paid. New business, transfer station fees.
So a few minor changes, adding in a provision, load size and prices are determined by transfer station attendant. Just to clarify, we're adding in a different size, smaller size because all we have is a full-size pickup load or a small-size pickup load. This is a 55-gallon drum can or bag, 55 gallon, gallon drum. Just added a third tier there for size and then adding in rugs as part of bulked waste.
So the load size and prices are determined by transfer station attendant? Is that to cut down on haggling argument? Is that what the issue is?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the transfer station attendant to determine what a half-load, small pickup load is.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine there's a lot of people that would come in there and be like, no, this is a small pickup. This is a big pickup. This is a half-load, that's, you know.
Right, the discretion should be at the transfer attendant.
And, you know, they don't, they absolutely not have to dump it there, but the prices are deter, the, the amount is determined by the attendant. And don't give them a hard time. They have a hard enough job as it is.
Right.
I was there today with a line down the road, down the hill. They're down a dumpster. There was not a, they were missing a container for household trash, so everybody had to go through it. They were doing a great job. They did it as quick as possible. So don't be going there and giving them a hard time.
Yeah.
And it's open tomorrow.
Yes, it is. It's open tomorrow for the, to make up for the fact that we were closed Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, and just to throw a follow-up comment on there too, like, I mean, even when the attendants have to ballpark something, if anything, they usually err down, you know, and where the town's eating more than the person dropping it off for the wait, so.
Has all these been, been posted?
Nothing has been posted publicly at this point.
Would January 1st be too soon then?
Yeah, I mean, you got to give them notice.
We can do a, we can just push that back to 30 days.
Yeah, so these changes will be effective February 1st.
Yeah.
We'll just make that note.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to accept the change to the half-load of the 55-gallon drum, can bag and full-load specification and a large rugs with the amendment fees going to effect in February 1st.
A second.
2023.
2023. Yeah, that says 2022. Yes, 2023. It's going to be another age before it comes back around, 2022. Uh, yes, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? There we go.
Along the lines of the transfer station and the hours corrected, open this Saturday, close Sunday, and then open Tuesday and Wednesday next week, correct?
Correct.
All right. Next, we have the Durant Road property purchase offer.
We have a offer to, someone was offering $20,000 to purchase property we have off of Durant Road. For $20,000, the purchase offer. It's essentially a non-buildable lot, so the neighbor wants to purchase it, add it to their lot. And I believe this has to go to town vote before we can actually sell it.
No.
No? Does it?
No, no, because we, no, because we, we can sell.
There was a vote once to get the board authorization.
Yeah, didn't, didn't we have that with the fire station? Wasn't that the, the vote that we had there?
Okay, yeah, that was, but when we sold the lot down on 236 across from the post office, things like that.
It was the 2021 election because it was, it was in the same referendum as Linda and I were in.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, town buildings need to go to town vote. Property, especially a non-buildable lot.
Excess property that we have the discretion to sell that. I'll give a little bit of history on this piece. It has, you go back to the town report, I think it was in 1883, they approved the money at that time to build the Durant Road. And if you go up this end of the road at Diamond Hill, the road goes straight. And then for some reason, when it gets to this piece, it veered off to the left and left that little triangle there. And for the longest time, I always thought it was associated with the property next door, the Goodriches there.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't until a couple of years ago that I realized, I found out that, you know, we actually own that piece. It's a non-buildable lot, it's approximately 130 feet or so on Diamond Hill Road and 300 or 400 feet on Durant Road. And as I said, I always assumed it just went with, was the Goodrich property back then, so.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other questions? I would hear a motion then, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we sell a piece of property. Let's see, map R40 parcel five on the Durant and Diamond Hill Road to Bimbostra Inc. Incorporated for the amount of $20,000 with a quitclaim deed.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? There we go.
Who seconded?
That was me.
Oh.
Sorry.
Uh, we have no quitclaim deeds. We have no abatements. Second public comment. All right, no second public comment. We are going to go into executive session title 14056A for the discussion of personnel. We will not be making any votes in that, in that executive session, so we will not come back out. Is there any other business, non-agenda items anybody wants to discuss?
Happy New Year, everybody.
I just want to reiterate, great job by the transfer station people. It was very busy today. I'm sure it'll be very busy tomorrow. And they, they were doing absolute their best to get everybody out of there as quick as possible. Thank you line workers and everybody who got the power back on. I know some people had extended wait with that and that was not a lot of fun for anybody. But I think everybody has power now, right?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. So, thank you to them. I hope everybody had a happy Christmas and good holidays and we'll see you in the new year. So I move that we enter executive session with the title 14056A, discussion of personnel.
Second.
No further discussion? All those in favor? All right.